Okay, being shortly after 7:30, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to water for February 28th, 2019. And the first on the agenda is for Nature's Remedy of Massachusetts. They request for a special permit to allow cultivation of recreational marijuana for adult use. Sir, how are you?
I'm great. How about you?
I'm very good, thank you.
I think you all have copies, rather than go through all this.
Yes, we do.
So I won't lay out all these and put them on form. There's three copies. We went away with a list. Got it from Kathy. Of all the things, I think, well, I know, everything on that list has been addressed on his plans. We have then added supplemental pages to the book that you received with answering all the questions that he asked. Our Tier Four license at this point, and we're going to upgrade it to a full two. The goal is to have 40,000 to 50,000 square feet of canopy eventually, but right now, we're in Tier Four. So I guess I'll open it for questions rather than walk through where every fire hydrant is on this and everything we've identified.
That sounds exceptional.
The one thing I have to apologize, we did underestimate the parking last time, so we hired the engineer Azor, Mr. Pink, to go through. Because when they said, they were questioned this last time, that they didn't think there were 77, I thought there were more. So we have identified 93 spots in here, 83 spots. So we have adequate parking. We talked to our landlord. These are the allocation of the parking spots that are on the site. We have more than adequate for us. And we still have 24, the dispensary, if that's over.
Yes.
So we feel, perhaps, a whole nother time for discussion, and they'll have to come before you for their own site plan.
For?
The dispensary.
Oh, yes.
That has nothing to really do with us.
Correct. Because you're just doing cultivation.
Right.
And your employees having to do with cultivation.
Well, it's, they have nothing to do with anything else.
Yes. I thought you had enough parking there, anyway.
Well, it's good to have sanity check, to go out there and.
Yes, sir. It's good to be considered sane. Anyone on the board like to make any comments?
Well, I'd like to comment for the record, because I had asked a whole pile of questions at our last meeting. And Kathy got me all the stuff before the meeting.
Yeah.
All of the, my stuff, yeah. And I found all of my questions answered. You know, everything that was on the site plan or everything that was on the floor plan was answered. Plus, there's an attachment, there's one important attachment that they added that describes what they were doing, 50,000 square feet, 20,000, 30,000, and all that. And allocated parking for 49 spaces. Facility will produce, will also produce edibles, oils, flower. So as long as this is attached, this particular sheet will be attached to that, to their package.
Yes.
Along with, I guess, along, along with the next sheet, which was, which is the copy of the application to the Cannabis Control Commission. As long as they're attached, I'm pretty happy with it now. The only, we still have to figure out a way of signing this subject to their receiving the permit from the state, which we don't, which we don't have that written out, as a condition.
A condition.
And we want to do some other conditions, too.
What's that?
Not a whole lot of them, but there are some other conditions that we could, that we could add to the special permit.
Okay. We're talking about the license they need to get for?
Correct. So there was a discussion, would you like me to address that? So there was an issue at the last meeting that was raised with respect to the question of whether or not they needed to have received a provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission prior to coming to seek this zoning relief. That is a requirement of the bylaw, but it was discussed that a condition could be put on the permit such that, basically, the permit is conditioned on them receiving that.
Good.
License. It'd be one way to address that.
I did watch the video. I did go over this, and I saw it in their bylaws, but, yeah, that's great.
And just one point of clarification, that I did have a conversation with the Cannabis Control Commission, because it was relayed to the board at the meeting, that the commission is not permitting applicants to go forward with a license unless they had their special permit. And the commission told me that that is not true, that they really can get their provisional license before they come for their zoning relief. So respectfully, I don't know who you received that information from, the commission.
That came from our attorneys, that they're getting questioned, asking if we have our special permit from the town before they provide. I can't answer.
Yeah.
Because I'm bounced, I have to tell you, I've been bounced all over in the questions.
Well, that was direct from, from the commissioners themselves.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, then.
Okay, thank you.
But that's, that's not unheard of, that a board or a commission will ask for something, like, an individual will ask for something specific.
Right.
That's outside of the parameters of what is.
The bylaws.
Yeah, the bylaws, or what's being called for.
Right.
And that's typical. What I'm asking my board is, I'm asking them if they would mind, or if they would consider granting a permission to these folks, under the condition that they come back in with a license before they can start operation.
Do you need a motion like that? I mean, so moved, if you, if you wanted.
I'm just asking if it would be.
I have no objections.
I have no objections.
If you have any objections to that?
No.
You have any objections?
Okay.
No.
Well, there you go. So is everything else, you believe, in order, where they've answered most of the questions, or all of the questions?
I, I'm sure, I mean, there's just like 400 questions you could ask. The ones that I was interested in, he answered. I can put it that way.
Yeah.
You know, there's a whole bunch of other ones that I, but they're not my questions. So I'm, you know, I'm happy with my questions, you know, and I had, as I had asked questions.
Do you believe it's in our purview to make a motion to grant that permission, conditionally, on them?
Yes, I believe that that can be a condition of your approval. I think the board should walk through the special permit review criteria.
Okay.
And make determinations with respect to each of those criteria.
Would you be willing to walk us through that?
Sure.
You know, because you're more familiar with the, you know, the criteria involved with that.
Sure. So the special permit review criteria from the bylaw is applicable to all special permits, including this, this type of use. And so this comes from Section 7.4 of the bylaw. And the board will need to make findings with respect to each of these criteria. So the first criteria is to determine whether or not the use is noxious, harmful, or hazardous, is socially and economically desirable, and will meet an existing or potential need. So there's sort of multiple parts to that.
Yes.
And I would just encourage the board, as they go through these findings, if they find that perhaps there are issues with respect to meeting one of these criterias that could be conditioned in a way that would allow the condition to be met, that that would be an appropriate avenue of discussion at this point in time. So if, for example, there is concern under the category of whether or not the use is noxious, harmful, or hazardous, for example, it generates odor, then perhaps that would be a good time to discuss whether or not you believe the odor mitigation is appropriate, or is there a condition you'd like to impose with respect to that type of?
Correct. But however, there is no way of knowing whether it is noxious or emitting odors until they've.
Well, so the way it reads, it says, "The adult-use marijuana establishment or marijuana retailer shall not generate outside odors from the cultivation, processing, or manufacturing of marijuana or their products," which, they've spoken to their filtration systems, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess the question, and we know that they can't renew, if there were a problem and it couldn't be mitigated, although I think this particular business owner's been very cooperative with the town.
Yes.
But if there was an existing problem, you certainly wouldn't want the neighbors to be impacted by that.
Correct.
They wouldn't get a renewal. Worst-case scenario, they're three years into this.
Right.
They lose their license, right?
Right.
So, well.
Or they.
The state may not necessarily be considering the local impact of odor as part of its license renewal. Though, there are some things that are within the umbrella, sort of, of the local review.
Okay, but if they came, had to come back through us to do the renewal, no, they don't have to.
They don't have to come back to you for renewal, unless you made the license subject to, or made the special permit subject to renewal, which, I mean, certainly, that is permitted, it's not required.
I thought, I thought, I understood what Barbara was saying, that after, was it three years? Three years, they come back to, and for the host agreement? Is that not true?
Well, the host community agreement is a separate, is a separate document. That's a contract between the town, executed by the board of selectmen and the applicant, that governs the financial terms and may have other provisions. There may be some overlap in permit conditions and the types of issues that are addressed in the host community agreement. The host community agreements are subject to renewal, at least with respect to the financial terms.
I see.
But the special permit, the zoning relief that is required for the facility to operate is really only subject to whatever conditions that are imposed by these boards.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. On the, toward the end of the conditions that we may, the planning board may impose conditions on, under F, on the.
Page 48.
This is from, page 48 is from our bylaw. And there it has the hours of operation. The adult use, and now the state allows us to, "Adult-use marijuana establishment or marijuana retailer shall not generate outside odors from the cultivation, processing, or manufacturing of marijuana or marijuana products." So we would simply have that as one of our conditions.
Right. So that is, that is a requirement of the bylaw. And certainly, if you felt that there was an issue with odor, you could come for enforcement under that.
We don't, we don't have to list it separately.
You don't necessarily have to, although the special permit decision is an opportunity to perhaps provide some greater specificity as to how you might monitor that. You know, if you have a report, how soon they need to address it, if reports continue over some period of time, that there may need to be a peer review of the odor control system and determine whether something. I mean, there are opportunities within that broader category to more specifically address how you might want to deal with these impacts. And just spell it out with specificity, so that while that is a requirement of the bylaw, you at least have a conditioned plan in place that allows you to address that.
Do we have to lay that out now?
As part of your decision. So, I mean, at this point in time, we're really just going through the special permit review. You haven't voted to issue the permit. So what you need to do, there's sort of a two-part process here. Number one, you need to make findings with respect to all of the special permit criteria. And then number two, if all of those findings you basically determined have been met, then you can determine to grant the permit subject to whatever conditions. So to some degree, there is a linking in the discussion between whether or not these have been met and the types of conditions you might want to impose. So as you go through the, as you go through the findings, you may just want to make a note of, well, here's an area we may want to have a more specific condition with respect to. And then once you get through your findings, then you can address with more specificity those areas of concern that may want to be conditioned in greater detail. Now, I would, I would, I'm sure the board is aware that the ZBA has already granted a special permit with respect to the medical use, and has imposed some conditions. So I think the board needs to be cognizant of the fact there is a decision out there, what conditions have already been imposed. Certainly, you can incorporate those by reference into your decision if you want to. And you can also impose additional conditions. I would be careful about imposing conditions that directly conflicted with what has been imposed by the ZBA. So, for example, you may not want conflicting hours of operations in two permit decisions.
Well, if they've already granted hours of operations, I think we don't have.
Yeah.
We don't have any, we don't really need to have any say in that. But as far as.
For growing, he should be able to grow 24 hours.
Yeah, I need 24 hours of access to people there in the middle of the night. So that, when it comes to hours, when the next group comes through for a dispensary, that's, that's much different. But I need 24 hours, seven days a week, to be able to have, I will have people in.
But I haven't really been able to go through the zoning decree, whatever they required, and pick that apart to say what we want to do and what we don't want to do, that might or might not piggyback on top of what they have said. So, I mean, this, this could take, this could take, you know, three months, if we.
I think we could do it faster than that.
Let me ask this question. The handouts that we have, the section that starts with page 47, and maybe I should be asking Kathy, these are essentially the findings. Did we meet this criteria?
That is for the marijuana bylaw, in front of that. But we're starting with a special, right there, that's the special part, criteria. So I think that's what you're starting with?
I think you want to start there and then move through. Now, the zoning bylaw spells out already a number of conditions.
Right.
And I think, by nature of the fact that they're permitted under that section, those conditions would apply, and you could simply just reference those in your decision. You may want to look at each of those conditions and determine, for this particular applicant, is there anything that you want to spell out with more specificity with respect to any of the mitigation or offset of impacts?
Can I ask you if you've seen reports, a condition of reports being handed in, like, yearly or something of air quality, or how, have you seen that being as a condition? Or, or if something happens, they have to address it within a month or something like, have you seen that being done?
Yes.
Yeah.
One of the things that I'm thinking about is, if we were to have a disagreement, let's say, for example, the property owner believes that there is not a smell issue, but the neighbors believe that there is. I would like to see a condition of our special permit be that an independent third party, mutually acceptable to both, somebody in that profession, be hired to provide a report, a study of whatever it is that we're talking about. So whether that's waste disposal, or whether that's odor, or even whether that is pedestrian traffic, which I don't think we're going to have. But I'm just thinking, having independent third party verify, because how do you settle a disagreement like that? I smell something, you don't.
Agreed.
Okay?
I would, I would just do it as, in that case, I win.
What?
In that case, I win. No, I mean, there isn't any, there really isn't any problem with just leaving it to the Board of Health, or to somebody that's, that's on our side.
Okay.
There, we don't have to.
Has the Board of Health put their?
They do sound.
They do sound, yeah.
Have they made any rulings on this? Are they?
I don't know, but they, they're as good as anybody else.
Yeah.
And, and we don't have to get into prices.
Okay.
Right. I mean, I just.
I mean, for instance, I'm just, for instance, I'm not trying to argue.
Yeah.
And we don't anticipate a problem, but this is the first one.
Ryan?
Yes.
Can I ask, didn't you help our Board of Health to do regulations for this industry?
Yes. I believe they have adopted some rules and regulations specific to that marijuana.
You know if they have anything as far as the odor goes?
I don't know, I don't recall whether or not there was specific odor provisions in that bylaw. I think odor is an appropriate area of conditioning, especially for a cultivation facility, because you're not going to know what that impact is until they're up and running and at full capacity. We have, I think there is technology out there that can address this. You have an assertion that?
I actually believe that Nature's Remedy has employed the state-of-the-art filtering capabilities for this. I know there's, there's a facility down in Plymouth that's relatively close to my office, the office I'm working out of right now. And you walk out in the afternoon and you feel like you're in high school someplace, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's not going to work out.
What's that?
Something like that, just wouldn't be.
No. Right. But I believe, I believe these folks have employed that, the filtering system to try to.
Our air doesn't go outside, first off. It stays in the room.
Okay.
And it circulates through the room, goes through charcoal filters, so the air resides in the room, every room that it's in.
Yeah.
And is, and everything is in, is a box within a box.
Yes.
So there, we are completely enclosed inside the building, and all of that air stays in there. Now, that is not to say we're perfect, and that there might not be an escape at some point. I guess my only thing when we get to this odor issue is measurement. How, it's, what is, I've come from a science background, what is a measurement, and what is an acceptable level? What is a one-time occurrence? This is the hard thing.
It's like a pot per million type thing.
In legislating this issue. I mean, I have friends in other towns who, like in Franklin, which is an enormous problem in the town of Franklin, and maybe in Plymouth next to you. It's.
I don't know if it's a problem, but, I mean.
Okay, but where is, what is noxious? I mean, we.
Right.
I mean, Katie and your profession make a living with what is noxious? What is, you know, determining a level that's acceptable versus unacceptable? Is there, if somebody has a whiff of something, is that unacceptable? These are, this is my only concern when we go down this rabbit hole, is.
It's not a, it's not a rabbit hole. You're, you're coming from outside of town.
Right.
Into our town.
Exactly.
And we get to say what you can do.
Of course, and I agree with you.
That's, that's a simple rattle.
I'm not arguing that point at all, Mr. Zinkowitz, at all. I'm not arguing that.
He's saying he doesn't exhaust.
Yeah.
I'm saying.
That's perfect.
I'm saying down in Plymouth, they exhaust. Yes, sir.
Mark Knox from, I'm going to butter at 303 Kenneth Welch. I just don't know if your findings or your motion on these particular items are going to carry over for other facilities, or if they're going to be independently handled one at a time. He may not have a problem. His system is good. I don't want this to set a precedent for the guy down the street that maybe didn't be as state-of-the-art as he is.
You're correct. Me either.
And, that being said, you know, his system could fail at some point. However, I'm not trying to create a smell complaint before it even exists, but I do think that some provision should be put in.
Yes. John has?
Yeah. Just kind of a quick one. Certainly, I brought up the odors from marijuana establishments, because Brockton stinks to the high heavens, and the, and the neighbors have complained.
There you go.
Many times. So we spent a lot of time trying to understand Nature's Remedy system. But I'll just use an example, if you took the MBTA through the old East Milton section, Baker Chocolate Building was there forever. Everyone loved taking the MBTA by Baker Chocolate Building. So they admitted odors that probably wouldn't be admitted, emitted today, or allowed today. But I think the way that you have it written, and maybe have Katie talk to this, "The adult use marijuana establishment and marijuana retailer should not generate outside odors from cultivation, processing, or manufacturing of marijuana or marijuana products." I mean, that's as stringent as it can be. So the Board of Health has gone to many clinics, if you will, on this subject. There are plenty of meters that measure odors and what the types of odors are. It's very similar to a decibel meter. You know, there's 80 decibels, 83 decibels, 90 decibels, it can all be measured. But at what level, to John's point, at what level is it unacceptable? But this is as stringent as you can make it. It says, there can be no outside odors.
Right.
I would certainly object, to an extent, that I don't think you should write a five-page procedure about how to measure the odors. This is as stringent as it is. And if it is a problem, it will come about. If you said, well, use a certain piece of equipment from XYZ manufacturer, well, three years from today, you probably wouldn't want to use that. This is as stringent as it can be, and I like leaving it as stringent as it can be. I think it would get out of our purview and get into engineering purview. This says you cannot have outside odors. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be interested in changing that at all. How you approach it, if Katie wants to show the town of Lakeville someone else's subsection, maybe, but this is pretty stringent, this is as stringent as it gets.
Yes.
And I like, I mean, we said no outside odors.
No outside odors.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, John.
I also am on the ZBA, which does special permits, and, and when.
What's that?
I'm just going to say, I think what Katie is saying is, okay, that, that's our standard.
That's our standard? No outside odors?
But what happens if there are odors? Are they going to come back to the planning?
That's what I was.
No, they're going to go to the Board, they're going to go to the Board of Health.
Right.
They're going to go to the Board of Health.
Excuse me.
They said, I'm not, I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth, okay? This is as stringent as it can be. You can debate this for the next three months. We've said, no outside odors.
I don't want to do that.
No outside odors.
I think to Katie's point, though, because I am on the ZBA, we have things in, and also in the building department, it's very difficult, say, for the building commissioner, someone that's going to force these things, if you aren't, have some limits to it. For example, if somebody says they want to put their shed, say, within the setback, unless the ZBA says, unless the ZBA says you may put it five feet back, it leaves it open, they can put it wherever they want it. You need, you need some findings to, like, help the person who's going to, the Board of Health, or maybe, even Nate, maybe. I, I don't know. I think that's what Katie's trying to say, you just want to put some, make it easier for our, our officials to be able to enforce what this says.
Well, then I. I find what John is saying, saying there shall be no outside.
No odors.
No odors.
To what?
No, to no, to no extent.
The question is.
To no extent.
What will happen, right? So he's got to enforce, what's he going to do? Shut them down?
Yes, yes.
You're going to, you're going to probably drop a dime to the cannabis commission.
And how long? How long will that be? I mean, it.
Yeah, I think, I think the town's board, town's boards and the Board of Health and the building commissioner has been reasonable, has a reasonable reputation. So if they go out there, it's like an ammonia leak.
Yeah.
You know, we don't allow ammonia outside a building, or inside a building, but yet, when the alarms go off, we go there.
So.
Fire department, yeah.
Yeah, we're not allowing.
In full gear.
Right. I'm not relaxing, and I get the idea of specificity, specificity, but it's a difficult thing to, to address. And you could spend months on it. Right now, it says you can't allow it. How you measure it, what is acceptable, what is, it's like, it's like a decibel meter, there's all kinds of, you cannot have excessive noise. Well, that, that goes around and around and around. There's enough lawsuits about what's acceptable. You know, what a decibel is at talk level, so on and so forth. You know, what a decibel is at talk level, so on and so forth. And I think that will be developed over a period of time. I don't know that you can do that in a new industry. This says you cannot have odors outside. And how you get there? If you have an engineering degree and you have a piece of paper that tells us how to get there, let's enter it into the record. Do you have one?
Well, I'd like to point out that we were provided with a sample of a special permit decision for the town of Medway.
Yeah.
And in here, they do actually list out, I'm not always familiar with all the technical terms, but the decibels and so forth are sound.
Right, right. That's different. Those are measurable.
Yeah.
Right, and odor, I believe is as well. I believe there are technologies that can...
Yeah, well, how do they address it?
That's gonna be the question. I think that's the point.
I think you, I think you're safe in saying you don't allow it. How you, you don't allow it.
That's an achievable goal. That's achievable.
I agree, but let me just, I'm just being devil's advocate because I'm in real estate. And in real estate, there's a lot of gray areas, and this is what gets people all hung up. So, the clearer you are at the front end, makes everything easier on the back end. Now, if a person were to complain, let's say that, you know, Mark thought it smells terrible outside.
Yep, absolutely.
And Mark calls up the Board of Health. And the Board of Health goes down there and says, "I can't smell anything."
Right.
And Rita goes down there and says, "Well, I can't smell anything."
Right.
And Zink goes down there and says, "Well, I can smell something."
Right.
What are you gonna do then? And I guess from...
They're gonna find out what equipment people should get to measure the odors. They're gonna have to work on that. Or you can say, "Let's do that up front." You'll never issue a permit.
Well, here's my, what I, I guess my original recommendation, and perhaps it's not the right one, but it was a suggestion, that, you know, if a dispute like that comes up, that at the property, at the business owner's expense, we hire a consultant to provide the scientific information. We're not anticipating that there's gonna be a problem, but if there was, now we have, you know, okay, Mark, we understand you've got a complaint, and Zink, you agree, but you don't, and you don't. Then we're gonna bring in the scientists, come up with a number, and here it is. I don't think we have, I don't know that we're in a position to necessarily start articulating the level of things that are in this particular plan, and they also recreational, which we're not even getting into.
No, because we don't have any parameters to identify, right?
Well, we're not, they're not applying for that, so it's, it doesn't matter, right?
They're applying for recreational.
Yeah.
For growing, but not for, I'm sorry, I meant retail.
Yeah, but the odors, the odors will come from the grow facilities.
Right.
Not from the guy walking out with his marijuana. I just wanted to say that, that I like this, you've said that no outside odors were allowed. Don't, that's a, that's a good thing to put.
And if I may, I wasn't suggesting that the board deviate from that standard in any way. My suggestion simply was, to your point, if a controversy arises, would it make sense to have a procedure in place for addressing that, that the applicant has agreed to as basically?
If you have one written that you wanna give to them, I would suggest you do. If you don't...
If the board would like to include something like that as a condition in their decision, I am happy to work on drafting that language.
But you already have that language. You work for all these other towns.
You do.
I mean, we would make it specific to the terms that the board would like to have in terms of procedure. That is sort of the point of the discussion.
Because we're trying to zone in on it.
Yeah, well, I encourage you to continue over the points, but we stop, kinda get stuck a little bit on the odor, which is a big deal, which is a big deal.
Well, just one more, one thing.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, do you need a motion or anything? I move to go no further.
What's that?
That we go no further with that. Just leave it at...
Leave it at the Board of Health's?
Leave it at no, no odors allowed.
Okay.
Fight it out in court.
Is your joint call to the next term?
Well, so, we're still on special permit finding number one, and the board needs to determine whether they have findings that would support that the use is not noxious, harmful, hazardous, is socially and economically desirable, and will meet an existing or potential need. So...
Can we stop at hazardous? We don't need the other words.
You can break this up however you want, but there should be a discussion about this language, whether you think this applicant has met that criteria and the facts that you have in the record that would support your finding.
I don't think it's harmful or hazardous.
No, I believe the use is not noxious, harmful, or hazardous, period. And that's as far as I can, with a straight face, say, that's it.
They also had some...
I'm not gonna say socially desirable. It's...
Well, they had water reclamation. They have a water reclamation process that's listed. They have a secondary well and a water, a public water hookup, as I recollect.
They have a public water hookup, but they have well water?
They have well water, and I thought they had a second backup. Maybe I'm remembering that wrong. Maybe the backup was the street.
The backup was the street.
They have a good security plan, so they have a security plan. They have an odor control plan.
I think it could meet the first requirement, the first.
Okay.
But I don't necessarily know if I wanna back Zink's motion that he said that about the conditions, that he wanted to leave it. He was making a motion, he wanted to leave the...
The use is not noxious, harmful, or hazardous.
But that doesn't, we're not, we're talking about our findings, but we're not talking about our decisions, right? What we wanna put in our decision.
Right, so, I mean, you can go through all of your special permit review criteria and find that they're all met, and then move on and then just discuss conditions separate from special permit criteria.
And I'm saying, yes, I agree that this is, would meet a special permit, in my opinion. I'm not saying I, I'd like to come back and discuss the condition possibly, if anybody else would. I know the same opinion. And I don't wanna prolong this. I know these gentlemen have been through a lot. They have been through a lot in town, and they provided us with a lot of information, and I think they're very cooperative. So, I don't think, you know, it's gonna be that difficult just to put some kind of, just some kind of a process or something to say, if something happens, you need to do this. Or we need to do this, or...
A method of resolution.
That's all. I'm not trying to make it more difficult. I would really like it, us to be able to get this done. That's, I'm not trying to be a, block this in any manner. So, yes, I think that it does meet that special permit criteria.
Oh, 7.4.1.1?
Yeah, they meet that.
Okay, and I really don't wanna go through and vote on each one of these?
No.
Okay, so, let's go to 7.4.1.2. "The advantages of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental effects, and such detrimental effects on the neighborhood and the environment will not be greater than could be expected from development, which could occur if the special permit were denied." You know...
This is written, this is written for our residential special permits,
Okay.
comparing one residential special permit to another residential special permit. It really doesn't, it isn't written at all for a commercial use
Okay.
in an industrial park.
So, Zink is saying that this does not apply, so, does everyone agree that that does not apply?
I agree with Zink. That's spot on, 'cause, I mean, you can have almost anything in an industrial park.
Yes.
And, you know?
Yes.
Almost.
Almost.
However, I'll take, I'll just be honest. This has taken me quite a bit of adjusting, thinking about having this business located. I'm used to toilets there. I'm comfortable with that. I kinda can predict the freezer guys. This is a different, this has been a different animal.
Personally, I've never had a problem with the growing there, and I don't think I will. I still have a lot of issues with the retail there.
Yeah.
And I've gone on record and said it, but, you know, individually, we can only do so much, so...
We have to deal with everything as it comes.
Yes, exactly.
You know, a lot of people weren't happy with, you know, a giant refrigeration and food processing facility on the main street in Lakeville. And, you know, but, you know, we're just trying to deal with it as it comes.
That's right, yeah.
So, this would dealing with 7.4.1.2. And so, if the advantages, if this paragraph is, doesn't apply, I would like to know if everyone thinks that this paragraph doesn't apply. It does apply. Okay, so you think this should, could be something else there that would be more beneficial to the town than...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm sorry. I'm saying that I thought you were, misunderstanding.
Okay. Okay, well, 7.4.1.2. "The advantages of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental effects and such detrimental effects on the neighborhood and the environment will not be greater than could be expected from a development, which could occur if the special permit were denied." So, that would mean that somebody else could come in there and build a...
A lettuce factory.
A lettuce factory. And they would grow lettuce, and people would become wealthy on lettuce, and everything would be wonderful. It possibly could, but chances are it wouldn't.
Well, this isn't the, they're not, the structure and the use is not creating a functional obsolescence. We're not gonna end up with a...
Obsolescence?
Obsolescence, thank you, where the, where the building is like an eyesore, and nobody else can use it, and it can't be retrofitted. I mean, from that standpoint, I think it's consistent with...
It could be changed. It could be turned back into a box factory.
Well, it's already been used for medical. It could be expanded into a rest of a medical.
Sure.
You don't change. So, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so, 7.4.1.2 is, let's say that's not applicable. Okay, 7.4.1.3. "The applicant has no reasonable alternative available to accomplish this purpose in a manner more compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood." It's an industrial park. It's kinda like, this is where we identified the area to, for this facility to be used, so...
Yeah, several years ago, we identified it, and we said, "Well, this'll never happen," so...
Right. So, we more or less stood back and said, "By your leave," so... Okay, so, the second paragraph of that, the special permit granting authority, which is not us...
In this case, it is.
Pardon me?
You are, in this case, the special permit granting authority.
No, with a, with a, okay. So, "shall determine that the proposal generally conforms to the principles of grid engineering, sound planning, and correct land use, and that the applicant has the means to implement the proposal of special permit, if a special permit is granted." I believe that would be affirmative.
I agree. I do.
Okay. "The special permit granting authority shall have the power to impose reasonable conditions and modifications, including limitations of time, use, as a condition of special permit, and may secure compliance or performance by requiring the posting of a bond or other safeguards." I believe a lot of these requirements and compliance limitations were applied by both the Board of Health and by the zoning Board of Appeals, weren't they?
Well, neither one of them have a bond. I don't think we need a bond.
I didn't say. I said the, I said the, the compliance limitations, or the limitations on the facility were placed by the zoning Board of Appeals and the Board of Health. I mean, we've dropped back to the Board of Health on the odors, so that's one of the compliance limitations. I believe we're already allowing them to run 24 hours a day because you can't stop things from growing overnight. And we need to ma, you know, maintain the facility 24 hours a day. It's a growing facility, so... I believe that's either not applicable or it's already been dealt with. Pardon me?
I agree with it.
You agree?
I agree with it as written.
Okay, so, 7.4.1.3, sir.
I just ask, when you say already dealt with, does that mean when you make a motion, that the motion would include all provisions provided by the Board of Health as your stipulation and as well ZBA?
I believe that there are several layers of oversight on this facility.
But because you're the special permitting agent in this place, you would then motion those things to be part of the...
Yes.
Okay, just thank you.
I believe the zoning Board of Appeals and the Board of Health have already implemented restrictions and requirements for the facility.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. I guess would town council agree that their motion should include that those are stipulations included by Board of Health, so that they're properly adopted in this motion?
So, the Board of Health regulations exist independent of any of these zoning controls. The Board of Health has independent jurisdiction and authority to apply its regulations and enforce anything under its jurisdiction. The zoning Board of Appeals has issued a permit for the medical portion, and so, to the extent that this board would like to see those same conditions applied to the adult use or recreational component, they could vote to incorporate by reference all conditions imposed by the zoning Board of Appeals in their special permit decision.
In order to not be redundant, but inclusive of?
Inclusive of, and they, as a special permit granting authority for the adult-use recreational, they have the ability to impose any additional conditions beyond what the zoning Board of Appeals has applied, or to spell out or clarify or anything that they feel may need to be further addressed for the, for the portion that they are the permit granting authority over. So, as an example, if they wanted to include something more specific on odor or sound or traffic than what was in the ZBA decision, they have the ability to address that.
So, may I give you an example, as I'm reading here in the Medway section? And I'm looking at page 11 under paragraph 5, the third paragraph down. It says, "The applicant," and this is part of their approved package, their special permit decision, so we have to do this, right? So, it says, "The applicant intends to supplement existing odor mitigation systems as part of the buildup after the preparation of an odor mitigation plan, as conditioned herein. The board finds that suitable mitigation measures will be taken to comply with the town's zoning bylaw with respect to odors." So, it's just saying there's gonna be suitable mitigation measures.
And in this, in this instance, just to clarify sort of what was going on in that this was an existing recreational facility, expanding to adult use. It had been up and running, and there were odor complaints from the neighborhood. So, as part of their permitting, they required a supplemental odor mitigation plan that was going to then be reviewed and addressed as the adult-use expansion occurred.
So, what we have the ability, if we are consistent with the ZBA's existing rules and regulations, that we can condition our special permit upon, you know, if we find that there's an issue with odor at any point during the time, that we will, the mitigation will be taken by the property owner to address it, to bring it in compliance with the bylaw, which says none. Yes. The bylaw says none. So...
By the, by the Board of Health?
By the Board of Health. So, is that redundant because the Board of Health is already doing it? It's a condition of, the thing is, this is a condition of special permit, so it's not, you know...
I'm listening.
If they, if they lose their, I don't know.
The Board of Health jurisdiction over... The Board of Health jurisdiction over odor, um, has to do with public nuisance odor. There is a more, there's a more stringent standard imposed in the zoning bylaw with respect to absolutely no odor and so, I would be a little bit cautious about saying the Board of Health has jurisdiction over this because the Board of Health's jurisdiction is to public nuisance odor, so it has to reach the level of public nuisance before their jurisdiction, um, comes into play. Because you have a zoning bylaw provision that provides for no odor to be, you know, escaped, then, then you have tighter zoning controls and if you have an enforcement issue, it may be through the building department as the zoning enforcement officer, rather than through the Board of Health. Although, if it is of a level of public nuisance, then certainly the Board of Health has the ability to be involved as well.
So we already have it in our bylaw, that there will be no?
It's already in the bylaw that you will have no odor.
Like a procedure for, and we don't have his guidelines, we don't have, I can see Nate not being able to enforce, because I am on the ZBA, I've seen their decisions and their, what they don't put in it and it makes it very difficult for the person that needs to enforce those regulations, say, they, if it's not specific, he can't enforce them. No odor in, to Barbara's point, no odor to who? I mean, what level? I mean, is it a... I, I think there should be some process there, some procedures, um, for the odor or... And I don't, I don't think it has to be extravagant, I just think we need to put something in there to, to give Nate the tools to enforce that bylaw.
Well, we want it to comply with the town's zoning bylaw with respect to odors, end of story. We expect the operation to comply with the town's zoning bylaw. Because any part of the operation that emits any odor, then Nate, then has the authority.
Go in and, and do what? To say no odor and how long and, 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 um, who's deciding, you know, what if he doesn't smell the odor?
Not to complicate this, which his next comment will, is you have three marijuana facilities up there. How do you know whose odor-
Right.
-is coming through? I have one right across the street from me. I have one a hundred yards, not even a hundred yards, I, up the street. I, I, I'm spending a fortune on odor control, maybe they don't. How is somebody gonna come in and determine that it's his smell and not my smell, or it's that smell up the street? I mean, this is my concern when we talk about no odor, I, I mean, zero tolerance, I understand, but when you got three of them in there, there's no way to say it's his odor, their odor, not mine. I mean, I'm hope, I'm gonna be the first, so I'm hoping I set the standard and then if odor comes, I can at least point to someone else and say, "Look," and I've been here for six months, but this is where I start to get worried and I, I'm not trying to comp- because I really wanna walk out of here with a permit, but I also am just trying to raise a concern that you're gonna have three there and, uh, you're gonna have another one, it looks like you're gonna build one in town. And I know there is somebody applying to do the backside of me, uh, in Tom's area, you know, for eighty-five thousand square feet that appeared. So, this is my concern is, how do we know who's, who's the offender in this thing?
There you go. That's to your point.
Yes, yes, actually.
That's my worry.
But-
Can I ask something?
Are we gonna put no, um, excuse me, uh, aren't we gonna put those same conditions on the, all the other marijuana?
They have.
Yeah, yeah.
So, when they say no odor, they are gonna have to find out who's doing it, there's gonna have to be some way of finding out.
So you need independent third party?
Yes, we need some kind of way to, to determine and have it enforceable, to say, "This is where the odor is coming from, this is the smell, it's at this level, is acceptable, not acceptable to the Board of Health or whoever." I mean, I don't, I don't know what kind of restrictions we wanna put on it, but I do feel there's something we should put in, um...
If we only knew where Goma kept his blue tick out.
The thing is, the thing is, if you don't address-
I know.
-something, you're leaving it open.
I know, but it's almost like you need a, something that can detect it. Like, the guys, the, um, you know, the guys at the airport. They have a dog that'll detect it, they'll find it in, wrapped in tin foil, inside a plastic, inside of your case. So they can, they can detect it coming from wherever.
So is it, the, this board-
I know, I wasn't kidding, you know, I mean, I was kinda, serious.
I know, so this board would just wants to leave, um, the regulation as this, as the no odor. This is the chance to, like, put down something that may help the community?
I know, but then we have to find some, some way to get it identifiable and then we have to get some way to, um...
Katie, are you able to put something together for us? I mean, or can we?
At some point, I have to be over.
Okay.
Right.
The, folks have been talking about, uh, the smell noticeable at other places and what I didn't, I just didn't understand what kind of, what kind of smell it was. The, uh, is this the growing?
Yeah.
I used to be a high school teacher, I, I know what it smells like and, and I can identify the kid two days later.
I lived through the seventies, me too.
Well, I didn't live, but the, no, anyway, the, uh, where, where does the smell come from?
The growing?
The growing part of it?
The plant.
It can come from, there's a spentry too, hate to, yeah, it can come from-
Oh, sure, but the plant itself-
This isn't smoke, this is just the plants?
This is the plant, yeah.
It smells like the marijuana plant, it, no more than a scallop, I mean, let's face it, there's a scallop odor when I pull in every day down at the plant there, I, it smells like scallops because they're freezing scallops and crap.
Roscoe.
He doesn't know how to keep a clean place, yeah.
But still, it's, you know, everything has a smell, I mean, a, a plant when you have, we're going to have, uh, let's see, we got eight in, we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have forty thousand plants in there, you know, a hundred thousand plants, they smell like marijuana plants. That's why we've spent so much money on keeping the air inside the building that we never ex- the only thing you'll smell, we hope, is the cookies that we bake and the brownies and all of that, 'cause that, that does go out. But the other stuff, we don't let any air outside because of this very issue that a lot of towns face.
There's a potential to have some kind of problem.
But there will be, guys, I'm here to tell you, there will be a mistake someday, something will break down, a door will open, I mean, and it'll blow out, we're hoping that, you know, it's an isolated incident that we can show you where we've mitigated it and we're on top of it and we're ha- we wanna be good neighbors. But it's, as I said, my greatest worry is you're gonna have three or four of them in there and where does, where did, how do you, I don't, I don't know, it's kinda like how many angels dance on the head of a pin when you get to where who's, who's the problem? And that's a, to, to write it, to figure out how to write that, Katie, you're, you're better than I am, to answer that question. I, I, I believe in John that the best answer is, there is, the law says there is no odor. And, you know, then there, the second part is, if there is an odor, what, what steps are necessary, how does it, how does it, how is it mitigated, I think, you know? You've already established a baseline.
That's all I meant was that, I don't wanna stop you, I-
No, I'd like to go home tonight with a, with a permit so I can go to the state and, and keep moving forward.
Yeah, we, we would like that too, I mean, I know I would.
I understand, no, I have no complaints.
Which one is this from?
I'm perfectly fine answering all the questions.
No, there's one, Medway? There's actually one more thing, uh, now that you've mentioned it, because I, the-
Do you wanna, you wanna read that into the-
The growing parts? I, I agree with John, you know, with the, we just say no and, and see what happens, uh, if it breaks and I guess. But, if your cooking rooms have outside exhausts, you can't have them. You have to exhaust to the roof.
Well, I'm saying-
That condition's gonna be written in here now that you mentioned it.
It's, we've met all the building standards according to Nate, where the exhausts and everything.
Yeah, but this, this is one that he doesn't cover. This, this particular one, this exhaust, any exhaust out of where you're cooking the stuff is gonna be roofed.
Yeah, but it's-
Yes.
Based on what?
But it-
Can I ask, no, it's, can I ask where you get that from, is that just personal?
No, I, I, that's a smell, this is that whole smell argument.
It's gonna be chocolate.
He says the only thing you're gonna smell, no, I don't wanna smell it.
You don't wanna smell chocolate?
Nope. I don't wanna smell anything coming out of the kitchen. Out of that kitchen, with, what they're-
What if you, what if they move them to the roof and you still smell it, what then?
Then it's tough.
Tough on you or tough on them?
Tough on me.
Really?
Tough on me, yeah.
Then move one to the roof.
That's too subjective, I'm, I don't agree with you there.
That's not, that's not, that's not subjective.
Move one to the roof.
The, uh, kitchen's exhaust fans, um, those are extremely expensive and-
Typically go to the roof.
Yes, they do, but, except, except his don't.
I'm not sure where they go.
They go right out the front of the building because Tom's too cheap.
I, Tom, Tom had nothing to do, because I paid for every bill that was in there, so that has nothing to do with Tom.
No, but, no, seriously, if, if you're exhausting, uh, the, you know, where you're cooking the marijuana type stuff, you should be exhausting at that roof level, just like everybody else does.
Uh, fire department, all I know is that we've met every standard, we've been inspected and approved.
Well, there's, there's gonna be a new standard.
Well, may, may, um, may I read that section, maybe that'll be sufficient?
Sure.
So, from Medway's, um, special permit decision on page sixteen, paragraph six, it reads, "The building commissioner enforcing the conditions herein may require additional odor investigations," cover that, "and/or odor mitigation measures should legitimate concerns and complaints develop in the future about odor generation from the facility. The applicant may further be required to address such issues with the board to its satisfaction."
That's good, saying, okay, that they come back to the board. It, it's not met, after Nate does that.
Yeah?
I don't know, I like that.
I like it too, um, but I don't want him to come back to, to the board if we're smelling chocolate.
Well, we will.
Right, so I mean, it says no odors, so are we saying-
It says no odors.
But, so I don't want him to be doing that, it's gotta be not-
I, I'm, my main concern is the odors generated by the plant.
Then you need to make that specific because we just say no odors.
Right.
That's all.
Can we write that into that?
Because I don't, I don't think this gentleman needs to come back for chocolate.
I don't think so either.
Yeah.
Can we, Zane, would you comply with that, would that be fine with you? If it's any odors generated from the plant itself? Would you have a problem with chocolate?
I have a problem with any odors leaving the place.
You do?
That's what, that's what the rules say right now, and I don't know how to rewrite that.
Well, I'm trying to modify it, because I think it's, I think it's-
You want him to say? Yeah, it might be easier if he looks at it and reads it.
What?
Zane likes that language.
I mean, we don't do special permits for anything else, so we really can't base this on anything. Right, yes, but-
I mean, we haven't talked about it.
It gets pretty open-ended when you start, huh?
Yes, when you say no odors-
Right.
That means we could go down and-
I mean-
Whatever smell comes out, we can say-
There's no smell of any kind that comes out of that industrial park?
You just said that-
Sure, every time they start a diesel truck, you smell the diesel.
Coffee shop has coffee smells.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a little too restrictive, I just wanted some, some means personally that Nate could go down and say, "Well, this is what we should do, mitigate it," or- and I'm not quite sure because I, I've never done this before, so I don't know how stringent it should be, but this sounded very reasonable, yes, it did.
What did you think? Page six, I drew a little arrow there.
I think reasonable is the key word.
And I, I would, I would say, I would suggest, I would encourage that we're dealing with the smells generated by the plant.
Right.
Not the smells generated by the chocolate that's going into the brownies that they're mixing with the plant, because what happens is you, that will eliminate any cooking smell that you would get from the plant.
Mask it.
Yeah.
We wouldn't require that of a bakery.
What, no.
It's not offensive.
Right.
Janice, do you mind passing it off to back to you?
Is that, is that a problem, chocolate?
No.
I, I know you, I know you, you're following it by the letter of the law, but that's-
Of course it's not a problem, that, that isn't a problem at all.
Okay.
So, in this case, vice-
If there are places that you can, you can make, make it smell less, what you would do, you know, I mean, there's, there's gonna be some exhaust from somewhere in his facility.
Yeah.
There are, there are exhausts.
I saw the exhaust fans for the kitchen, I mean, it's a very impressive kitchen, i- it's top of the line. It exhausts straight out towards the street, you know? But, it's-
It's an industrial park too.
And what are they?
Correct.
It's an industrial park, it's-
And it's gonna be the cooking.
I think the fact that it's just, that, that people are, the, the product that they're growing in there, uh, is making us, um, sort of biased as to, as to the regulations. You, you know what I mean, we're, we're, we're using, um...
If people complain to the town that it smells like marijuana-
Right.
-coming out of the fan, we're gonna deal with it. If it smells like brownies, we're not gonna, no one's gonna deal with it, that's perfectly all right.
They, they, they might be making watermelon gummies and it's gonna smell like watermelon for a week and a half. And people aren't gonna complain that it smells like watermelon, they, maybe they're gonna make, they're gonna make-
They won't complain about that.
Right, exactly.
Is it, is it feasible that-
The chocolate, the watermelon.
Four buildings in there growing marijuana, that there'll be no odor?
What's that?
Is it feasible that there'll be four very large buildings growing marijuana in that industrial park and we won't smell anything?
No.
It's not feasible, is it?
No.
Well, it depends on their investment, and his point is he's going in first. If his investment product works better than the next guy, then his investment's gonna pay off, because the next guy's gonna have a bigger problem because the town clearly does not want odors. Right?
I mean, I've had conversations with my neighbors, they all know what, uh, that are growing and I've told them what I'm putting in there and I said, you know, very plainly, "I don't want problems from you, I'm spending an exorbitant amount of money to make sure that I'm a good neighbor and I, I don't, when you come in here, this is what we're doing, nice, I don't wanna have to sit in front of a board because you guys don't have the money to do this."
Correct.
You know, the-
Sure.
So, as in a butter, I don't think it's reasonable to say no odor.
From?
That, that's what the bylaw says.
Yeah, I understand that, what I'm just saying.
So-
I, I've spoke out against this initially, I've sorta come around, just, it's coming, it's gonna happen. But, I think that there needs to be a reasonable standard. If the whole street smells like marijuana, like headache at the end of the day, there's a problem. But I also think that, no matter what, there's gonna be an odor at some point when the wind blows a certain direction, if you say no odor, it's gonna open up complainers. You're, you're giving a license to somebody that's angry.
Yep.
Brian, if I may too, you know, I, this is, this, I don't say this lightly, but the town voted that they want this. So, at a certain point, you gotta take the, you gotta take some of the side, uh, you know, some of the, um, side effects with what they feel are great benefits of it. You just have, you know, and, I mean, it's, uh, you know...
Go ahead, Mr. Chin. The, uh, the, back on the odors, the, the biggest complaint about farms, whether they be horse farms or pig farms, is the odor.
Yep.
And the state has taken the approach that it is part of the operation. And, so that's how the Farm Bureau somewhat addresses it. What is normal? That is chicken manure, horse manure, pig manure, there has to be disposal processes and something similar to that. It, it's a difficult thing, that the whole country has been working on odors, never mind the marijuana odors. Pig farmers go out of business all the time because the neighbors come, or it smells, it smells too much, well, what's too much? It's been there for thirty-five years, but that's the standard complaint. And the way they got around it, not around it, is that it's part of the farm smell.
Right.
The farm noises, the farm smell, the hay, you cut the hay, the hay smells. I like the way it smells, but other people don't like the way it smells, so odor is, is a big deal that I think has to be addressed with reasonableness. To, to write a, a document could be twenty pages.
Yeah.
And, and I think that you take- And, and I think that you take it as it, as it somewhat comes. If, if the butters like the smell of, uh, brownies, it's okay. If they don't like the smell of other odors that are coming about, we have to address them.
Correct.
We, we just have to address them. But it's a, it's, this isn't anything new. Farmers, they basically go out of business because they're tired of fighting with, with neighbors.
Yeah, generally, it's the farmers with their, a hundred years before the neighbors showed up. The neighbors show up and then all of a sudden, why are these people growing this or?
Right, right.
Raising these things in my backyard.
So the Farm Bureau has addressed the odor issue. I'm not implying that you look at their procedures, but it's, it, it simply says it's part of the business, not to relax it. We don't wanna relax it at the beginning.
This is, this is opposite.
Yeah.
This is when the farm moves into the, to the existing neighborhood.
Oh, yeah. So exact, no, it's exact, it's exactly the case. And there, and there will be odors.
There's, uh, there's farms that are non-essential, you know?
I guess.
I guess.
You don't need pumpkins. I mean.
Sounds new.
Go ahead.
Could I make a suggestion that Barbara had read a standard from the Medfield, uh, bylaw? That basically put in that they had some sort of air filtration system. I'm not looking, I'm sort of paraphrasing, but I think that that would be a good thing to put in there, that grow facilities maybe have an air filtration or purification system much like theirs. You wouldn't be putting a burden on him, he's done it.
Yeah.
And you'd set a standard for the rest that are going in there. And then those facilities, if there is an odor issue, would be held to the standard of repairing, upgrading, fixing their air purification system so that it's at a reasonable level.
I like the way he's done his homework. And where he's put in his filtration system and he's recycling the air back inside the facility.
Yeah.
It's, it's all going in the right direction.
I agree.
Okay, so, um, where do we stand right now? I think.
You reviewed all of the special permit review criteria.
Yes.
So at this point, you may want to close your public hearing. They don't believe we've done that.
We have not.
Close your public hearing so that you're not gonna accept any more testimony, comment, or evidence. Vote on your special permit and then discuss perhaps potential conditions. If you want to impose anything beyond incorporating what the CBA has done.
Okay, I would like to close.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now you move into your deliberation.
Yep. Did you wanna make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we make a modification to the Medway planning, um.
To ours, to incorporate?
To incorporate the language from the special permit decision from the Medway Planning Board into our special permit condition. Which is paragraph six listed on s- page sixteen.
But I would. Vote first on whether you're gonna grant the special permit.
Yeah, we're not on the condition yet.
Vote to conditions before you.
Add those in, okay. So, do you wanna make a motion to, I'll make a motion that we take a vote on the special permit? Approving it, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor for granting the special permit?
Aye.
With, with the, um, with the, um, um, conditions that we, uh, plan to impose on that.
And those conditions are?
We haven't done that yet.
Okay. To be exact, in a second.
Or you could do the conditions first. You, I mean, it's up to you.
We got that far, let's just keep going.
Yeah. So that's a motion.
Second?
I seconded it.
Okay.
And Peterson?
Aye.
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 Here we go.
Okay, now moving on to discussions.
Yes, okay.
So now.
So we've made a decision, now we're perfecting the decision.
You basically get determined what conditions apply and then.
Okay.
We will put that to writing and have the board
Right.
vote to approve a final decision that makes the findings and imposes the conditions.
And I guess one thing I just think we should keep being mindful of before we start this discussion is this is not specific to nature's remedy. Whatever we do here will be applying to the future. So it has to be strict enough to apply to any other business that may come, that may have a different presentation or strategy, right? Right?
We, uh, as a matter of, we, we can't bind our, a future action to anything.
You'll take every applicant.
We have to take them all as they come.
I guess, is the better way.
Yes, no, we have to take them all as they come.
Okay.
Okay.
So we wanna add in that language that says the building commissioner, I'm making a motion to add in this language as a condition of our special permit. The building commissioner, is that his right title?
Yes.
Yep.
In enforcing the conditions herein, um, may require additional odor investigations and/or odor mitigation measures or sound investigations or sound mitigation measures, should legitimate concerns and complaints develop in the future about plant odor generation from the facility. The applicant may be further required to address such issues with the board to its satisfaction. Is that what we wanted to say? Does anyone have a modification?
I don't think so. I, I don't, the sound, I don't think we have anything to worry about sound.
That's okay. It's good to throw it in there.
Okay, but, I mean, we got, we got a guy, a guy growing plants in between two tin knockers.
It's sweet at night, you never know.
Yeah, but, but maybe the mixer is gonna create too much noise for the brownies. Go ahead.
It's in their HBC system.
I don't really have a problem keeping the sound in.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. There we go.
I'd like to make another motion.
Go right ahead.
Um, and to, for the interest, in the interest of time, can I batch these together? Do I have to do them separately? Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to add as another condition that the permit holder shall notify the building commissioner, health agent, fire chief, police chief, and the board in writing within forty-eight hours of the cessation of operation of the marijuana business for the expiration or termination of the license holder certificates or registration with the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay. I, I of course agree with that, but I think we've already got it.
Do we?
I, I, I think so.
Well, we're done, we're done, didn't seem to have a kill anybody.
Right, so I'm, I'm not gonna say anything.
Aye.
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 All right, um.
You wanna roll?
This permit does not, yes, I'd like to make another motion. This permit does not authorize operation of a retail outlet for the sale of adult recreational marijuana products or the operation of testing facilities on the premises. Just to be perfectly clear.
Where's that from?
That's the same, I'm taking it off from the Medway one.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
We are going to be testing products. Not, we're not a licensed tester, we're not, but we will, we have an HPLC machine that we test, when you say doesn't allow testing, that's very broad. We do test all of our products to, for, you know, accuracy, THC content, all of the things. Now, we aren't certified by the state to, we can't publish those on our labels or anything, but it gives us an indication. So we have a testing lab, as most places do. And they're non, non-explosive, we don't use explosive chemicals and all that. It's just an HPLC machine, but I just.
It's done with a machine, it's not done with a bunch of people.
Right, but it's testing. Nonetheless, we have a testing lab that tests products. I think what the intent is that we can't certify results.
Right.
You, you're not, we're not a, we're not a licensed, state licensed testing agent. I just wanna be careful of that word testing.
Okay.
What paragraph?
Yeah, I'm on page sixteen.
There's separate companies.
Okay.
Perhaps maybe, um, we can talk about a general condition term and, um, and I can work on modifying the specific language. I think the intent here is that what is being permitted is, uh, what they've applied for a license to do, which is product manufacturing and cultivation.
Right.
And, and, and whatever is inherent in those state licensed uses. What you are not authorizing is a retail operation or any other type of state licensed marijuana business. And so I think that the condition that we're looking to impose needs to be specific to that. So perhaps.
So you can work on that?
I can.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Well, that, we, we haven't discussed anything about retail at all.
Right, 'cause this is not, you're not, you don't have an application before you for retail.
Correct, 'cause that goes into the next paragraph.
So did we vote on what you just said, Katie? I mean, did the, do you make the motion to?
Make a motion? I was in a motion, I think, when I was reading. So, um, but that motion would, would be contingent upon Katie, modifying it to a specific means of like those.
I'll second that.
So base, yeah.
I, I just.
Motion to include a condition that makes this specific to cultivation and product manufacturing and not retail.
Just not retail, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Kate.
I, one of the, one of the.
Pretty hard, it's good.
They, they did, Medway has a way of, uh, they identified something that could be, could be tested by anybody. This was, uh, page seven. And they, they just said, you know, they, they just gave some diluted hydrogen sulfide. And, and that was the level of that particular dilute was the exception. So, so there is a, there, there was a way of quantitatively working out the smell.
Is the applicant aware? Do, did, have you read that?
I've never seen this before.
Oh, okay. I was wondering if you are familiar with that exact, um, like, standard?
I have no idea.
Well, you haven't seen this usually.
I haven't even seen it.
I, I know, this is more of a, um, odor, um, standard that Zink just mentioned.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just happen to be reading. There's so much to.
For a thousand cubic.
So much to read. But there had to be.
I just have a question, another question, and I believe you answered this at our last hearing. Your water is filtered before discharging the chemicals?
It is, uh, filtered like three times, yes. We keep recycling water, we capture it, put it in the tank and go through reverse osmosis again and again until there's nothing left.
I think the hydrogen sulfide smells like eggs.
Okay.
Once you put it in with water. So they're trying to compare the odor to the odor of the rotten eggs.
All right.
And that, I believe, is still subjective.
All right.
But I think if we just let Nate deal with it and maybe he'll, he'll send Janice on there. Janice, okay, give her a whiff.
It did not, the land, what I proposed did not say building department.
No, it says building commissioner.
You're welcome.
You let her off the hook.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, so, is there, are there any other?
Concerns.
Concerns.
I have one, and I don't mean to back up all the way back to parking, but when you did your, when you changed your parking, um, schematic, you, you added five spaces for a company called Sea Trade?
Yes, they're already there.
They're already there, but how does that affect the fire lane to get, for a fire truck to get around all the? They're not listed in the, in the early plan. I, I compared them. But then you added five, which to me, I don't think you need those five right there. I, I think you could have just taken five out of your thirteen in the back um, and given them to.
Where is the five that we're looking at?
Uh, A, it's, uh, note A in the way back, uh, far right corner. Because if.
All those five?
Yeah.
That's where they park now?
Right, but that's on, on a, uh, for prior, um, you know, we're moving forward and we wanna be able to assure that the fire department can get around. That's why they built the fire access lane.
So you're looking at?
Right here.
Oh, these five. I always thought you were talking about these.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's right here, which is, uh, which is just empty in your first drawing. I mean, if it's a big deal, I.
I can't answer that tonight. I mean.
That's fine.
Generally, when the fire department shows up, if something's in the way.
Yeah, well.
It's no longer in the way.
Right. But in general, you shouldn't have to push a car out of the way with a fire truck to get to.
That's why they get that big thing in the front.
They don't always bring that.
Cowcutter. Sure they do.
All right, never mind.
Pete, did you put, it's a very good point. Did you think that they had a sufficient parking even if those weren't to be utilized?
I, 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 I feel as though their parking is well-handled, um, insofar as they could, they could take these five or even just three spaces back and, and allocate elsewhere.
It might be advisable to eliminate those spaces.
If you want me to do that, I will be happy to do that.
I can't tell because I never walked back there. I never went beyond the generators, so they may not be really an issue.
Sufficient even if we don't have those, um.
Yes.
And the fire department signed off on these plants?
Then I'm fine with it, actually, yeah.
The revised plans? No.
No, they haven't.
No, they have not.
So that needs to be.
If you want these removed and you make a condition to remove it, we'll be happy to remove those off the site. Give you, and give you a new stamp.
I don't see what it could hurt. Um, I mean, uh, it's, it's a way to get completely around the building. Let the fire department come down and they pull into your front lot and then realize they need to get to the other side. Now they're turning around.
If, if that's a part of it, that we're happy to do that.
And you don't even have to move all five, maybe just the first three. Write it, write it A.
Okay, we can do that. Not a problem.
Should we make a motion to, um, have the fire department approve the new plans? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they approve the most recent plan? I think that's a little unfair to them.
No, that they have, they, they still have several times. They, the, the fire department's coming back many times.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before they're, there's still plenty of inspection.
And as they're doing the work, they come by all the time.
And they'll.
Right.
And then after that, they'll come back one more time.
Right, just to make sure, okay.
So are we, um, we're good then?
Yep.
I don't think we need any more motions. I think we're.
The condition.
Conditions.
Need a FCR before you make a build.
The conditional. That their, that their special permit is conditional on them getting a.
License.
License.
Right, I, gee, I thought we said that.
I, I, I agree with that. We just don't have the verb, we don't. It's gotta be typed up.
Fees are paid too. Any fees are outstanding?
Has to be written.
Didn't we say that last time? Or is it just for release of bond?
So I'm certainly willing to work on a draft decision, um, and have that be circulated to the, the board for their final approval. That incorporates the findings, um, the conditions that were discussed this evening, as well as incorporates by reference the zoning board of appeals decision, if that's the board's desire.
Does that work?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that good? Thank you.
So what did I walk out with? The special permit or not?
Yes.
They voted to grant the special permit subject to the conditions that were discussed this evening. Um, a final decision will be prepared by town council and circulated to the board for their final review and approval before filing with the town clerk.
Okay, thanks.
There's a bunch of typing.
Thanks, guys.
So two weeks later, you're filing with the town clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing a lot of you soon.
Yep.
Hope so.
Now, I think, all the places that I worked during my career, they made the, nobody allowed roof, you know.
Wall, wall fans. I see them, I see them all the time.
Yeah, but because, because that, because that, that's because you worked in the, in the back alleys of Sargos.
No, that's because you worked in the HVAC business. I would, I would like to make a motion that we. Adjourn?
No, we still have a lot of meetings.
Oh, God, Brian, that's the mistake I used to make.
You can make a motion.
What's that?
We still have plenty of meetings.
Making a motion will let Katie go home.
Oh.
And Brian too.
We got a lot of meetings left to go, huh?
No, not a lot.
We would be meeting here for days.
Can I make a, make motion on item agenda number two that we have no comment?
We have to look at the, what is it, the special for the board of appeals, whether we want to comment on that, is that what you're doing?
I'm making a motion out to comment.
I'm seconding that.
Okay. What do you think Brian says?
About what?
Her motion, will she second it? Should we take a vote?
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to comment on them?
No.
I haven't even counted yet.
I haven't either.
Sorry. I know, I, I do agree.
Do you want to comment on them?
Can we, do we have to come up with new business, can we postpone?
If you make a motion to that.
You first come, last to vote, and decision information.
It's really just informational?
Just informational?
Just the one thing that corresponds from Permouth County, you might want to take a look at that. Something you want to do with that.
So this is to review the zoning board's decision?
Have you signed that, have you signed the thing for the registry?
I don't know, I don't think so.
Thank you, Katie.
Then you have to sign it.
Thanks, Katie.
And the next, are, the election's on April first?
I think so, I think that's right.
Okay, so after April first, we have to get Mark to.
So you want to just hold that off until?
Sign it, too.
What's that?
We have to, the signature block for the registry of deeds, we have to have the act of signatures.
All of us?
Five, the five.
So, do you want to wait, or do we need to do that?
We can wait for Mark, for Mark to get elected.
So can you make that motion, Zink?
Makes sense?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I didn't hear Zink, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's gone, it's gone amuck, I didn't hear anything he said. I missed, I totally missed.
No, no, it's a signature block, we have to, each year, we have to.
Oh, yes.
Give the registry signatures.
Okay.
This is, and the last one, that zoning board.
It's just informational?
That's just informational, that was the decision that was made, if you want to take a look at it.
Yes.
One of their conditions was that it has to come to site plan, to site plan, I mean, to planning board for site plan review.
That's for, that's first calling?
Yes, so I just thought if you wanted to take a look at it.
Sure.
And see their conditions and their findings.
That'd be nice to read, get a lot of stuff out of our way, so we don't have to think about it.
The interesting point there is that if the zoning board of appeals hadn't sent it to us, it might not, it, I think it normally would have come to us anyway, but technically it wouldn't have to because we have that weird.
It wouldn't, it would not have gone to you because it's residential, so if they hadn't made that condition, there would have been no review.
But, but the residential is anything over thirty-five hundred, and this is certainly over thirty-five hundred, so it should have come, except that there's something in that, in, in our bylaw that says.
It's a subdivision, it's a subdivision of property. Right? Because it's going to be multi-residential on a single piece of property, it's a subdivision of property, would have come to us.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
But not everyone, not everyone agrees with that, apparently, but what they, I mean, under site plan review.
And they come back three years later, when the, when the building inspector comes to them and says, what are you doing? Where's your permit? Where's your, where's your site plan review?
No, the, the under site plan review was that if they, if it goes to the conserva, if it requires a notice of intent from the conservation commission, it doesn't come to us, it just goes to the conservation commission, which doesn't make any sense at all to anybody.
No.
But that's what it says.
And, yeah.
That's what it says, yeah, so it was one of the things that was going to get changed by your committee, Peter, and then.
It's not mine, but.
No, no, but, but no, but then it got dropped because of, because of some other issue with it that had to do with the drainage, the, the new drainage laws.
Yeah.
And it got messed up in that.
It used to be the water board.
Right, it got messed up in that.
Yeah.
And so it's still left out there as a, as a problem, now, what, what Don and, and your committee did is they, they sent it to us for site plan review anyway, so everything's fine.
Right.
But it, it was, it almost wasn't fine.
It's a change of use, it should have come to us.
Oh, I agree too, oh, absolutely, I agree, but that's another.
Yeah.
Yet another bridge.
So, speaking of, speaking of the zoning board review advisory committee, may I, I have a meeting next Thursday, a week from today, and just added, and, and, and I don't think this was snuck in, it's merely just, we're moving through the zoning book, where, so when this got added, it got added in a spot where it's next, we're, we're going to discuss and possibly make suggestions for the special permit for recreational marijuana. So by all means, if anybody has any thoughts or comments from what our existing zoning bu, now, we don't change it, obviously, obviously, it's just a, a committee that merely just, you know.
Suggests.
Makes suggestions to, back to us.
Yeah.
This, that bylaw just got written six months ago, why are you changing it already?
I, we're not, we may not.
Oh, you may not, what, what?
The judge reviewing it.
We can't change anything anyhow, Zink, all we would do is possibly read it, and if, and if, if the five members of that committee thought of anything different, they would present it right back to you, and, and then you could, you would have a, a chance. I, I would like you to come, you know, and if you have.
That particular, that, that particular one, the only thing you could change in that would be changing it from, you know, to taking it away from the planning board and giving it to some other board to do, that's, that's the only possible change.
Just kidding.
No, 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 I mean, seriously, that's, that's a change.
Oh, well, that would be a huge change, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make, let you know that that's one of the agenda items.
I think that's, that whole thing is an interesting, the recreational retail sales of, is going to be.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Now, this, this is, Medway sure had an argument about it, I mean, when you read it.
Well, they had a problem with an existing facility, she was saying, so that's why they went after it the way that they did, because when they went to do expansion, they had existing problems.
Oh.
So they came down on them pretty hard, so the whole first section I was looking at was in response to the public hearing, because there were so many problems.
Yeah, so they had an existing facility without a bylaw?
I think it was medical that they were at.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah.
And they had complaints?
Are we still on the business?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to mention to you that I had learned about the opportunity for the state to give communities technical support, I wish I had the flyer with me, I don't have it with me, I might have mentioned it at the last meeting, I think that state technical support for districts or large parcels of land that may be posing challenges, the perfect person to be getting some help from something like that would be the owner of a Lakeville hospital site.
Yeah.
And so I'm just letting you guys know, I, I do, I do know one of the parties that's part of the owner, and I'm going to share the information from them, but the request for support is due by March thirteenth, and I had contacted the state to just ask them if this was even an appropriate, you know, thing for me to do, and they haven't heard back, so I think I should just move forward, I had mentioned it in passing to Janice, I don't think it can hurt, and if it gets the, you know, the community members some more technical support or, or ideas, architectural ideas or use ideas, that might be beneficial to the community.
Yeah, I think that can only improve that project where it doesn't have a specific plan yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I thought it was a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
I've got to jump on that, I've got to do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they could use some help.
But they're on my to-do list, as I'm telling you, days get lost.
Yeah. So is there anything else?
Do you have, do we have a budget? Do we do a budget request for this?
No.
Hundred and fifty dollars?
We do this every year.
Huh?
Sorry, we do this every year.
Do you guys want to take me out for my birthday?
Seventy-five dollars.
That's your birthday? It was last. Oh, my friend, happy birthday. No, it was last night.
Jase, you, this, you're going to be for more meetings, right? This isn't your last meeting, right?
I just have two more if I can.
What am I doing tomorrow?
We need to submit, I, I move we submit a letter.
I'll party my way home.
To Rita, asking to be put on the budget for, to add a planner to the budget, like we have for the last five years, but we have to write a letter. Okay?
Someone second it?
I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I agree. Be nice to have someone working full-time to help out Janice and Kathy.
Yeah. Brian, how many years have you guys been?
Me, Kathy, you and me.
I remember years ago talking about it.
Were we a journey?
By me?
Yes.
What's that?
We're going to adjourn, somebody want to adjourn?
Sounds good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need the motion.